This conference will now be recorded.
And that calls a regular meeting of eleven to take the order.
Airbox.
Here.
Yes, here.
Mr. Dandy.
Here.
Mr. Bowe.
Here.
Mr. Y.
Yeah.
Mr. Bowe, will you lead us in our...
Please, ladies and gentlemen. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day to be a little positively forward together. We thank you not only for the wonderful times, but also helping us through the hard times this year. We ask that you teach us so that we may become good stewards for you and us to come. We ask that you remember others in our community that are struggling this year and ask that you are with them. We ask that their holiday season be filled with peace. And we ask that your blessing show a light in the still bright and healthy, bright and healthy new year. Father, help us find joy in you above everything else. In your name we pray. Amen.
My permission is to the flag, state of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation at all, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. I salute the flag, the state of Mexico, the sea of jungle, friendship among the African cultures.
Maybe see.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with two changes, removing Resolution 2022-135 and also removing Resolution 2022-136.
Okay. Can we motion, say, for the approval of the agenda as? Yes, as she says. Yes, sorry. Any further discussion? Okay. Shannon, roll call.
Commissioner Deo.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Y.
Yes.
Yes.
Airbox.
Yes. Okay. Welcome for motion on the consideration of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of the minutes of November 28th, 2025. Can we have a motion in a second to consider the adoption of the minutes of November 22nd?
Any discussion? Shannon, roll call.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Mr. Y.
Yes.
Mr. Deo.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy.
Yes.
Airbox.
Yes. All right. Reasons to our commission staff report. Shannon, do you have anything you'd like to present?
Yes. I wanted to inform you that Los Mariachis has applied for beer and wine authorization and will be hearing that if I'm not reading. So it has been advertised. And also, this brought to my attention that the Hobbs City Commission on their public comment period, that they had people sign up before the meeting so that they can speak at the meeting next time.
For the public comments.
That's all I had to know.
Okay. Any questions, please? Thank you, Shannon. And Tracy?
I just have the grocery receipts tax report and the financial report that I'm going to... So on our grocery receipts, for October, we were... For November, for the October month, we were one million again. So that's last three months, and that's pretty good. And then the rest of the totals are on back of the revenue, slams the revenue on the back, of course, the leader and the gas tax and where we allocate some of the money.
Tracy, I would like to bring, especially since it's on the report, that the grocery seed tax rate for the city of Lovington is no longer 7.25. And the reason I know that they filed grocery seeds can, on the left on the state website, it was adjusted whenever the state dropped to 0.125. So I don't think we've ever talked about that or made aware, made our businesses aware that they've noticed that their accountants or whoever does their receipts have noticed that. Anyone want to correct that one?
Okay.
Any questions? Commissioner Deo.
Yeah, and the only question, I don't have a question mainly pertaining to this, but on the wastewater plant, maybe on this next meeting, you give us a figure on where we stand, if we're in negative, we're in the red light, we're in the red light. It's not the one we're kind of like maybe undercharging off our rate.
On the water and wastewater?
Yeah.
And utility?
Is that the one? Yeah, I know there's one that we maybe just break even and have some discussion of what we plan to do.
Yeah.
We're going to discuss that in January.
Thank you for the report.
Lovely. Thank you.
Chief. Mr. Mayor, from the city manager. In review of citations filed by Lovington code enforcement into the Lovington City Court between January 1, 2022, and December 1, 2022, we collected the following information. Of eighty-eight citations issued, twenty-eight were dismissed, and the court has no objection of an additional twenty. That means that fifty-five percent of our code enforcement citations being issued are either lost or dismissed by the court. On a related note, I will propose raising fines for both code enforcement violations and traffic offenses next year. State statute only permits a $500 maximum penalty for city ordinances, but only one of our ordinances at that level. Most others could be raised. We're also checking into how we as a city can raise our traffic citation penalties as well. On another note, I'm happy to announce that our department has been awarded $112,000 from the state sponsor recruitment and retention fund, which the governor created last summer. Of this $112,000, I will allocate $75,000 for the hiring of a returned certified officer. We have already once signed up, so you can start in two weeks. This will total sworn officers to twenty-two. The other thirty-seven thousand will be used for retention incentive payments to our officers. This will be distributed in an equitable way, rewarding those officers on a sliding scale who have been with the agency for the most consecutive years. It's a way of saying thank you for working so hard through staff shortages, COVID-19, and furloughs. The incentives will raise, excuse me, the incentives will range from $1,000 for officers with zero to two years up to $40,000 for an officer with over ten years within departments. One note, I excluded myself from this incentive pool because it increases the size of the pool for the other officers, and it also is a cleaner way of administering the funds, as it can't be said that I did this for my own financial benefit. To my knowledge, we are the first agency in the state to allocate these retention funds to our officers. We hope that actions like this will continue to build loyalty and officer retention within our department. If you have to stand for any questions, you may have.
Are recurring ones?
We will get the same amounts, if not more, next year, and then get fifty percent in the third year, but it's ahead against officers leaving. So we're able to add one more officer, city manager approved, too, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, chief.
We love it. Governor, give us some.
Sorry.
Chief, just trying to...
Say it. On the screen.
Any questions, families, for please? Party.
Mr. Mayor, my permission. So we've been working, the shifts have been working, the seventy-two hour shift for two weeks. As of right now, everything is going well. So far, we've had no problems. Our numbers for November follows. We had 244 EMS calls, fifty-four transfers, thirteen transports to the airport, seventy-four refusal DOA cancels, we had six tail end calls, and sixteen fire calls. Last month in November, EMS brought in over $99,000, just from November. We do have new hire testing for December 30th. Right now, we've got two people that are supposed to be there to apply for test. And that's pretty much all that has to do with it.
All right, number... Our EMS canister, that compared to last year, we downed to low, but from what I remember last month, I believe we were up about fifty-two hundred. And they just seem to be getting more and more.
Well, as you get less and less people, you know, that's a problem. Because always feast for vengeance. I can bet it can be a feast, and you...
Where's me? Go ahead. Skip on the recruitment area, is that involved also Lovington?
Yes, sir, it's within a hundred and fifty miles.
I'm just saying, from the way you're skipping, it's forty-eight on, forty-eight off, or something like that.
So we're normally forty-eight on, ninety-six off, but with the critical staffing, right now, we're seventy-one, seventy-two off. We're only running two shifts because we don't have personnel staff.
So we are advertising Lovington?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Bowe.
Yes. Holiday seasons are upon us, we all know. So I'd like to wish the public, city staff commissioners, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Couple things. This is no doing of mine. We kind of electric last week in a transformer class, and we had a bunch of individuals from all over the state show up to learn about transformers and everything, and we had twenty-three rooms that covered it. And we know it's about heads and beds also. So I'd like to put out there, thank you, and I'll put that out for anybody that does anything like that for our community. They let me know, I'd be happy to give a shout out because it all kind of fits all of us. And in a year now that I put out there that every commission meeting, I was going to take it, I was going to talk about eating local, shopping local, staying local, because it's important for businesses, it's important for a community. So I was going to do that for a year. Today's a year, so I don't have to do it anymore. But yes, we know I will still do it.
You just wear the butt.
I'm passionate about it, I am, that's why I talk about it. Because to me, we need to take care of ourselves, we need to take care of our community, our businesses, restaurants, everything, so. Just wanted to put it out there, thank you very much for everything the public does, staff does, commission does. I hope that we're going in the right direction, we're trying. No, I just want to say that everybody out there is appreciated. Thank you all.
Mayor, I'd also like to wish the public a Merry Christmas, staff a Merry Christmas, force a Merry Christmas. It is a good Merry Christmas after I saw that million dollars right there. But I thank you, thank you for... I know majority of you come to meetings often, so we see each other all the time, and so I really like the relationship we have, and I hope we continue it. I hope you guys continue the passion that you have for the city of Lovington. And we welcome, we welcome. I may sometimes I think about it, and I say, man, I just get in this television, and somebody will tell me something, and I was like, yeah, I should have thought of that, too. So I just want to say that the year's ending, and I know we won't meet again until after the new year, but I always welcome constructive criticism, sometimes I even welcome regular criticism. It makes me jiggle, you know, it's like, oh, okay, got me, you know, but I really appreciate everything. I really appreciate all of you that are in this room right now, because you've all shown the passion, and we've come a long way since last year, so I really appreciate everything you guys have put in. Thank you.
Commissioner Y.
Again, Merry Christmas, everyone, and keep our grocery finders and military in their thoughts and prayers when they work holiday.
Commissioner D.
Job loco.
We eat every time.
They're not going through the pressure because you're called to have to serve pizza. So if they want any, if not, I'm taking it off, so. Please take all you need.
I think obviously not going to get here, get out of your act great, so get off.
The only thing I had is this a light parade? And I didn't check last night when I go to campus. Like in over by school, those lights had never come back on, all the streetlights. I noticed that. So they're out.
By Taylor Meadows.
Yeah, you know, like where the parade ground is for the lights, so all the streetlights are out, you know.
They're off on eight.
So I don't know if somebody grabbed the flip switch, or just, you know, I'm suffering for choices. I don't know which it is, but I appreciate some of it. Other than that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
It's Eleventh Street.
Yep, yes, Eleventh all the way over to like Seventeenth. And then I want to say there's someone at...
From that, from that...
Something like that, yeah. I want to say something like MND, Eleventh Street, then Eleventh Street back to the south, all the way back over toward Seventeenth.
That would be Avenue Main, probably.
Yeah, somewhere in that area, yes. I don't know how far south it goes, but we'll take it all the way back.
Thank you, Commissioner. Jaylene?
Yes, mayor commissioners, I just wanted to let everybody know of the holiday closures coming up. City offices will close on the twenty-second at twelve and will be closed through the twenty-sixth. We'll open back up on Tuesday, and that's for Christmas, and then for New Year's, we'll be off on the second, and then we'll open back up on the fifteenth. And that's it.
Have we published?
They are on the website, so we do that through July.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, because we need to prove it through the open meetings and practice. And they're, so they're on the website for this, yeah, our best for you for this year for those.
Any questions for you? Thank you. City Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, the issues that I have to discuss will be in closed session. So at this time, I stand for any questions that the mayor commission have.
Thank you.
Oh, we missed our video, sorry. I don't know if I missed this, but the hundred and fifty thousand allocated for the construct design, did we ever do anything with that funding?
Two fifty?
There's one fifty, right?
One fifty, there was one fifty.
Cap riley. Cap riley.
So, right, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I spoke to Laura Brock, and she's working with Dor LaTista with COG. So I'll follow up and find out exactly where. So she was working with her.
Good, and no reason can you let Laura know that? When the legislature meets again, sometimes if that money's hanging over, they won't allocate funding towards that set. Is that, so she may lose out on funding this year because she's didn't spend that one fifty as well as...
Okay, I will definitely speak to her.
Ms. Bowe?
Mayor of the mission, I was going to give you upcoming road projects, I gave you all the sheet. And you know, I'm working to do the Mill and Ultra Lake project on North Main from Gotham to Juniper, so that'll be north of the hospital area. West Avenue J, we're looking at doing from Fifth Street to Seventh Street. East Central, we'll be doing from just where they stopped the new pavement when they built the new judicial system all the way over to commercial. And then we did have, and those are all in our grant that we bought from our TPF grant we wrote before for NMDOT. We had East Avenue K, but the county has approved doing East Avenue K all the way from Main to industrial. So Avenue K will actually get refurbished all the way from Main out to industrial by the end. And then my micro sturdy cell projects, I have over four and a half months worth of roads there listed. What I needed to look at for you guys is, so East Avenue K, since I'm not doing that under my TPF now, I need to amend our TPF contract with NMDOT, and I need to replace, so we don't lose that money, I want to replace it with another street. So I gave you a list of streets that are in really bad condition. And so if you guys want to reach out to me any other time and just say, hey, you know, I think we need to do this one or this one, that way me and Bernardo can come up with the best lake plant to replace that, because once I reallocated through NMDOT, that's what we need to stick with.
When do you need that decision to reallocation?
I imagine right around the first of January, I need to start working on that reallocation paperwork, just because I've never done one. I've been told it can be done, so I'm going to have to get with the NMDOT people and kind of see what all I have to... And I know they said it would take, the one person they did talk to with NMDOT said it would take a resolution to amend it for you guys before I even submit to them for it. So that's why in the first of January, I hope to figure out a road I'm going to replace that with. It is about twelve to fifteen hundred linear foot of roadway. It's not talking the width, that's linear foot. And that gets me my money to do that much.
Would it be possible for you to make a recommendation, maybe in the first meeting, that would kind of give an apples to apples with, you know, your and Bernardo's prioritizing, and then we can maybe come up with a decision instead of getting a bunch of different opinions, and then one of them is not, the top one that we decided to choose isn't either the same, you know?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything, oh, I did find out, like, right before five o'clock, I got a message, the Avenue R tracks were paved today. So that...
Open it up.
Yeah, the streets will go check that in the morning first thing and open it back up if ever needs.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bowe. First of all, with the MND, I know with the weather and everything, I know that area is a close up because they wanted to have it completely closed so they could help speed up where we at on the project, if you have any idea.
So they are also having a problem with the storm drainage pipe. Their supplier, they're behind on supplies. They are like putting a piece in and waiting for another piece to come. So they're having supply chain issues with that. They've been working with NMDOT for about three, four weeks since they noticed it was starting to be an issue, and now it's getting to where it's... So they're working on that, and that should be resolved soon. They plan to have at least the commercial intersection opened back up by mid-January. And that will be before, they plan to open that up before they close on D, for sure, I mean, they have to. But they, they're not planning on doing, the intersection of D and Main should not be closed down until probably March.
It's going to be a sad day when we do that. I'd have to expect at least two months' worth.
Is there any way of possibly, knowing that they have a slowdown, just to get materials, what they have before they decide to take that area out, that they have everything on?
That they have everything on hand before then?
Because to me, that would be the smart...
That would be the smart thing to do, yes, I would envision that to them, but we would like to see that happen, so we don't have that closed down long enough.
Because it'll end up being four, five, six months.
It'll be rainy season, but I'm going to get started either way, so.
Are you saying next year about this time?
No, if you're looking at some spring rains.
No, I'm talking about before it would be red. I'm figuring maybe.
Oh, yeah, completion date's not till 2014, so, yeah.
Twenty-fourth.
January, I'm sorry, January of 2024. Yeah, we like all the years. We'll have our whole other year, so.
We've got the entire...
Main Street isn't finished, or?
No, I'm not leaving that.
First of all, on the Avenue J from Fifth to Seventh, I know that that is a, like, when we, anytime we like have water, that is a collection area. Will there be some possible engineering in there to provide it, because?
That is something we need to write a separate grant board, and the thing is about, the thing is, we have looked at that area before, and if we raise the elevation of the road, we're going to flood the homes.
I know, yes.
So the only other thing we could do is to put in some underground drainage, and that would be coming all the way from there, all the way down to Main, and that's going to be quite a large project. So, and quite a bit of engineering would have to go over that, and we'd be tearing up many alleys and roads to get that done. So, but it is something I've looked at through, you know, mitigation grants. So after our hazard mitigation plan, which I love the county right there, so we can be involved in that, that is one of the drainage issues I would like to resolve with the hazard mitigation grants.
That's true, there's several of the streets that run, that may not be, it's not a perfect line, but it's all in line. And we have several lakes that we create in roadway which deteriorate the roadway, and when we put it right back in, it has no life, so it's not a good situation.
This is like Van Buren in Main, right, north of where the drainage stops. There's never going to be no drainage there, and that stays a puddle of all.
All right. Any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you. Mayor commissioners, don't have anything new to report since the last meeting, but have anything for questions?
All right, thanks, Mike, thank you, sir. I'd like to address the commissioners, and I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We appreciate the attendance and the comments and the outpouring that we've had this year. It shows, hopefully, that our community is involved. I had the luxury of spending the day with the United Way as they were doing their allocations, got to visit with a lot of the recipients of those allocations today. And there is a lot of need in our community, and it is from children through adults... a lot of need in our community, and it is from children through adults in various phases, and we have a lot of good entities, nonprofits out there that are trying to solve these needs, and it's eye-opening, and I'm all the time amazed, one, at the need that we have in this area, and, two, that the groups that we have that try to help, sometimes, you know, help is either monetary or it can be in many forms, and so if you don't see or you're not involved, you should take a look and just find out what these entities do, and they provide a lot of assistance for our community, and I was able to thank a lot of them today. It's really a heartfelt, especially at this time of year. Dentions run high, emotions run down during the holidays, and they help a lot of that alleviate it. So, you know, we have a blessed community. God bless our community and our citizens, and we just want you to know that we're striving to help our community and our city to better us for the future. Anyway, thank you all very much for being attendance this year. I appreciate your attention. Just bring this to our public comment section. Geez, I've been ready. Anyway, come up, state your name, and...
I would like to give you all these. Our adopted spot didn't get put on the agenda this time for the actual thing, but this is just kind of a rough draft, and some of what we... Some of the rules and just a signage for the spots. I've been in contact with the Parks and Rec and also Crystal, and we want to work very close with them to make sure that we do it correctly when we do it, so it's, you know, but that kind of gives you an idea of the rules that we, you know, kind of laid out for it to begin with. So don't worry to add onto that, change anything, it's just kind of a rough draft.
Isabel?
Yeah.
For the record, state your name.
Oh, Kimbrough. Sorry. Like, I'm the director.
Well, again, because I went to the county commission the other day, walked out, signed up, everything else started, and Chairman Jackson said, "For the record, state your name." That's what I told him.
We have a couple of other things that we want to address as the chamber, that we want to do. One thing is, I know there's been a lot of complaining about their no street, no decorations on the light pole, and I would like to say that I have helped her. We have virtually searched this city for the decorations, and they cannot be found. I finally, Bobby helped me with Lee County Electric, because the crews that put them up, you know, Lee County Electric does that, but what we were told was that they're set down at the bottom of the poles, the city guys, put them down there and then pick them up. Best we can tell, we did find some of them, they're destroyed, they're not in good shape. Go ahead.
Did you check with the water department?
Yes.
Those up in the top?
Because they're not any good. The brackets are broken, most of them, that's all. Yeah. Well, there was...
60% are torn.
Yeah. We're not doing some little angels. Remember the little angels and all those little things that were up there at one time? We can't find the garden. We found...
The garden didn't go...
Because it just got... The garden got... Okay. It went up last year, didn't it?
Yeah.
I didn't think that. I had to go out to a box and more, like, from Walmart, it was too small.
Really, really cheap.
Maybe put up what they had. So at this point, you know, the... We've been trying to review the contracts that the chamber had with the city, and the city is supposed to be giving us $5,000 a year for those decorations. At this point, the block rate's over and all of that, like I said, we've been searching for two, three months for those decorations and finally found them, and we found some of them behind at the museum, you know, back in there, they're not any good. It's, I mean, it's trash, and I think it would almost be embarrassing for the city to put them up, and so we don't want to put them up.
You know, for the Lee County Electric, I apologize for not putting them up, I totally not to worry about it, because we didn't have anything that could actually be put up that would look nice, so I took it upon myself to say, well, we're not going to do that. If it's going to look good, let's not do it. I know that people were kind of upset about it. I'll take the heat on it, but I'm not going to put something up that doesn't look up the park. We, I mean, you're going to represent something, representing nicely, and that's kind of how I felt, I wasn't going to do it, and, you know, I had to keep people, personal people, personal phone calls, I said, you know what, I said, I just chose not to do it, and like I said, that's all under it, and, you know, I appreciate the kind of speaking out to me, asking me, you know, that they were ready for me, and I just thought, it's not worth it, because it's not worth it.
The other thing on that note is that we, next year, maybe we won't be here, you know, we won't have the three down Main Street, it'll settle down, but, and so that area being blocked off, that's going to give us two years to either do fundraisers to come up with, you know, better decor, we're not that new, you know, so we're going to have to do that. The... There was a lot of other issues that we're finding that there's just no way we can do anything about it this year. So again, we apologize for that, but it could, it's not from the lack of...
Right.
We did everything we could to try to...
I would say even the wreaths are sold, so once we put them up, the rent, they're going to become...
That's what they're telling us, that they were...
They're not saying.
Yeah. They're not saying anymore.
They don't really decide.
Yeah, we're thinking maybe the smaller ones. Now, we were told that there was a sleigh that was bought, that the chamber bought, we can't find it, we, like I said, we're at a loss at this point on where anything is, where it's gone. We were told that some of it got moved for an auction, that it got sold out that way, so it's just kind of, we don't have a clue. So, better note on this whole Christmas thing, I really want to personally thank Isabel and Ashley and everybody that worked on our electric light parade. We had 127 entries. That is record-setting and phenomenal. You guys did a great job, the prices, everybody pitched in, but these girls have worked so hard to get this up and going and to have the best light parade I think we've ever had in the city. And it was, they did all of them, I didn't, I was on the stage. They all worked very hard, and so I get to thank them all for all the work, but like I said, we're hoping that that just gets bigger and better every year or two. But we're going to be looking in the next year or two, for the next two years, before we get, be doing fundraisers and looking for money to buy new Christmas decorations that are more feasible, you know, that will stay there, not get blown down. Last year, they had several of them blown down and were broken, and so one of those cars didn't get hit, things like that, so I just want to let you all know where we were. And these girls did have done a phenomenal job with that parade, we were really proud. They're working already on the fair rodeo parade, and we're hoping it'll be just as much bigger and better, so if you need, if you want to sit.
Just a tiny little comment, David, can we get you a green jacket that says the grins that stole the love each Christmas?
That's fine.
I would probably move on.
I think our work is unanimously voted by backing him on that, that we just do not put anything up and put something crappy up, you know, because, yeah.
I want to sit.
Yeah. Yeah, but like I said, it blows his heart, he's catching it back. It was unanimously. Do you all have any questions for us about the chamber, or what we're doing, or what's going on? Isabel, can you give them a report on how many new members we got?
I'm not... They brought on. I would say our membership is increasing every month by $1,000, so that's...
Which means they're bringing in on five to six new members every month.
So off the top of my head, I don't know. But we are getting a lot of members coming in. We have members coming in from pubs, online boutiques, and looking at the chamber.
Things are looking up, just like for the city, because everything's kind of looking up around here, so... Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had one thing, and on the $5,000, it'd be best, two years and a bye-bye, maybe we can get a contract ready.
That's when I'm going to get a good start.
That way you can already have something in your budget, what you're looking for, and I know Mr. Graham over there, years back, he's the one that started, he's the one that pushed for the five.
Oh, I remember. I thought pushing for that.
Yeah, so, but we haven't utilized it in years, I don't think.
No, it hasn't been.
So the contract needs to be reviewed, probably.
Yes.
We feel a little...
Yeah.
Probably just compare.
Well, and we can start looking at, you know, options and stuff, and maybe when put it out, or, you know, for, you know, for the community, you know, to pick out the ones they like the most and things like that, make it as a community thing and not just three or four people deciding what's going to, you know, it is about the community and the Christmas, and so I think that would be a good idea.
Well, I was going to rely on Mr. Pio's tenure here, to ask you, what was the agreement, you know?
The agreement was, right then, I think we decided... I mean, Jay, just want to start with that. Did we look it up?
Jay, we...
Yeah, we've already, we've already looked it up, but we can't figure out when it stopped, who decided it stopped, or... It just said as long as there's room in the budget for it, and then at some point it just stopped.
Then it's like 2011 or...
Yeah.
Oh, gee, y'all...
It's going to be, so now we're going to look at bigger, better decorations, maybe so...
No, we know, we understand, you know, that it's something that we're excited about doing and getting back in, but that does give us a two-year, you know, with Main Street being...
Maybe we can ask the community to sponsor a pole or something, you know, a decoration or something like that, and, I mean, I'm...
People want to pitch in.
You know, I mean, something they could say, you know, like an octagon pole or something like that. I mean, it's...
Hey, you said we were getting new.
My mind is not silent, you know?
These new business in town, and they just stopped a lot of the poles.
There you go. You know, and I will say that after we talked about the adopted spot last time as a discussion item, I had a couple of different businesses approach me, you know, and say they're very interested in it, they're excited about doing it, and so, you know, I talked to the Parks and Rec and with Crystal, you know, and I just want to assure you that that's something that we want to be hand-in-hand with, you know, with making sure that it's good with Parks and Rec, good with Crystal, good with you guys, you know, it's something that's going to be a partnership, not just, okay, we're going to take it over and do what we want, you know, this is going to be a partnership that we're really excited about.
Yeah. March was plenty season.
Yes. We tracked our work to get that.
Next up in the... Before we make sure it is on there, because I'm not going to put up the...
Okay. Okay. We just, I thought the mayor was doing it, he thought I was doing it, and we thought you already knew, so we all knew.
I didn't.
It's a... Okay, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say to all of y'all, thank you for all that you do. You know, sometimes we just tend to come up with... Right, and it's not, you know, so much this is what we're going through in our community, you know, that y'all, sometimes, you know, because everybody lives in different areas, but I just want to say, we tend to, I know that some of y'all have, you know, reached out in personal ways, and we appreciate that. Please, we don't forgive. And so, also want to thank our lawn mowers, they're just awesome, I mean, you know, we're very blessed that we have a local police chief and just the, I've known some of y'all since we were kids, in high school, we went to high school, and I, you know, Commissioner Jay Williams. He doesn't remember, but I was lying on him.
You knew him when he had hair, right?
Yeah, I mean, I got, he's always... But anyway, you know, some of y'all, I don't know, but, you know, it seems like Lomington's going in the right direction and it's just going to take the... Did your long time, have friends from high school here, anybody love you? But anyway, just want to say Merry Christmas and thank you. You know, I know that each and everyone here, in one way or another, y'all do care, and then sometimes it gets pretty tough, and, you know, you're sitting, you're standing over here and you're a little frustrated, what's going on in your area, you know, having grown up and seeing what y'all are capable of, and get your minds to it, you know, and get the right people here, you know, that really do care, and I know they jump, and then I just want to say thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Evelyn McGee with the Livingston EDC, Mayor and Commissioners, I wanted to give you an update on the North Main utility. More than one occasion, Commissioner Brock has asked me for reimbursement for MP Care, and I actually have a check here for $127,586.3. I want to apologize for the delay on the reimbursement. We did run into some snags. When the project was complete, the city didn't ask for main waivers, and he will not, he was not willing to pay until main waivers were issued on project completion, and that did take quite some time. We also ran into a snag and not being able to provide proof payment checks. So we, constructors did give us copies of the checks, and that's the only reason why you were able to get payment on it, but, and just so you know, came in $7,500 under. The original project was $313,000, we came in at 302. So we did come in under, and then just provided the check to Tracy, as well as a copy of the agreement that we leased, that the city signed. What, the way it worked was, we were going to provide the payment all upfront, so we paid for the project, and once everything was certified complete, we can reimburse the remainder, we paid once we backed, we paid the remaining. So other than that, the project was already complete. We were just truthfully being honest, we've had this check for a couple of weeks, and we're just waiting on validation on the real amounts, and then this, this check is to be put back immediately. Any questions, please?
I want to say thank you.
Sorry. I just wanted to give you an update.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll be moving on. All right. Dr. Martinez?
Mr. Mayor members, they think, and we are all aware that our success depends on partnerships, and we have created some really good partnerships within the community, and we all know that it's critical that we continue to partner with not only organizations but individuals. And so at this time, I would like to represent, recognize two county commissioners for their contributions. So the first one is, I would like to ask Commissioner Dean Jackson to... Commissioner Dean Jackson represents District One, and I would like to present this plaque to you, sir, for your dedicated service to the city of Lomington. Your work and your help with the city has been outstanding. Let me thank you for your work. You are a great partner for us. So at this time, I'd like to present this. So at this time, I'd like to present this. Commissioner, if you have anything you would like to say now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you have to take another picture.
Well, it's.
Please say.
I feel that it is our responsibility to help this town. Of course, Livingston is my, in my district and during the hard times, we just tried to help Livingston every way we could. I appreciate the diligence that y'all have shown, trying to get things in order and moving forward. And I see a lot of bright future ahead of us, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank, I'm taking a seat with Chairman Jackson. Since I stepped into this role, he has been pretty much the person that I reach out to that asks, you know, how should I do this, how should I approach this or whatever? He's been a world of knowledge for me and his experience has helped guide me through some times through this. And so, not only is he a commissioner, he's my friend and I have really appreciated his instruction throughout it. So, thanks.
Mr. Mayor members of the commission, at this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Rebecca Long. I don't think she is in the audience today. And so, what I would like to do, I don't want her to think she's gonna get away with it. We can, we can, we can have this on the agenda in January, but she can be here. But, but the other Lee County Commissioner out of District Two would be Ms. Rebecca Long for her dedicated service to the city. I'll make sure.
Okay. Dr. Martinez, would you like to introduce? Yes, I'm sorry, for the water plant, I had to get back on track.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, at this time, we would like to present our forty-year water plan update.
Good evening, everybody, refreshing from big finale, heard the area except for the ball joke. I see her people in both God's name and Merry Christmas and all that, Merry Christmas to you all. Really appreciate working on this plan with you and Mayor Calpers, thank you for your input. Councilor White, you're simply putting on the plan as well, I appreciate that. Martinez, of course, has been wonderful, staff has been amazingly helpful and got good personal comments from folks like this over here in addition to a lot of other public input. I'll talk about that, I think this has been, really been nice for us. Um, I know when we kind of did the kickoff of the plan, Mayor you had mentioned that the city was able to get a grant from someone and unfortunately I can't remember their name or who it was, but I thanked it as well and recognized them for helping move this process forward as well. Annie McCoy worked with me on this plan and she did mostly heavy lifting, but she has a young woman help, so she doesn't travel as easily as I can these days, so I'd like to give her some credit too. So the forty-year plan, um, is, is really a state statute that every municipality has to have if you're going to do any kind of water rights transfers or hold on to your water for more, have more water than you really need for a four-year period. And it's required by the statute, which is listed up here. And anytime you wanna transfer water rights or anything different with them, maybe you wanna turn irrigation rights into municipal things, rights, it requires a forty-year plan and State Engineers Office will be looking at that. And the contents of the plan, of the plan are fully put into the administrative code. So that's basically a recipe for what we do as we go forward, although it's not really everything that's in there, but it has to have that particular framework that's embedded within the plan. So the plan talks about your water rights, how many water rights you have, how many you've been using, projects used for the future. And we go through the historic use, current use, existing population, population projections. So I'm basically gonna tell you, I'll tell you what we're gonna go into later on here. And it requires reasonable population projections, which are hard to come up with, so we bracket them on the low, medium, and high. Uh, it talks about the implemented water conservation measures you have, things you might wanna consider in the future. Per capita use, it's the gallons per day that everybody uses in the system divided amongst people. And reasonably projected additional needs for forty years, plus anything else the state engineer needs necessary. I have no idea what that is, I'm sure it varies a lot from place to place. Uh, this is just a map of where you live. But the important part of this is the Blue Alpine, it's the Lee County Underground Water Phase. It basically is the Ogallala or the High Plains aquifer defined by the cat rock, the aquifer ends. So the recharge area, this aquifer is on the eastern, I'm sorry, the western part of the county. Water flows across the county and on into Texas, this is one of the two loaves of the Ogallala in the Texas Valley, the other one's farther up north. And everything the state engineer administers in here, the file numbers start with an L, so if you're looking at, if you're well numbered, there'll be L, there'll be S, or something or other. This is an image of your two wellfields, so you have a city wellfield, which is the one up on the top left, and then the southern wellfield, which is the bottom right. So the vast majority of your wells are in the southern, that produce water for daily, are in the southern wellfield. And there's seventeen wells in that wellfield and that's the exact number of the city wellfield. But there's a big reason why you produce water there in the city, that we'll get into in just a little bit here. There are some concerns with the location of those wells, with the current various activities. So the being aquifer, or actually your only, your name is the Ogallala, also referred to as the High Plains Aquifer. So it consists of sands and gravels primarily. It's a barely shallow aquifer, it ranges depending where you are, the saturating part, the part with water in it, can be, you know, tens of feet thick to maybe four or five hundred feet thick depending where you are in the basin. The depth of wells ranges from maybe a couple hundred to, to over five hundred feet in depending where you are. So this is sort of a three D image of what the aquifer would look like, you took a slice of the earth and you were, the top one, if you were looking northwest from the city here. The blue part, or purple in some places, is the saturated part, the part with water that goes into your wells when you pump. Part above that is either historically has never had water in it or has been dewatered by various, you know, pumping from municipal use agriculture, whatever uses are, withdraws from it. And the lower red part is what locally is referred to as the red beds. It's, um, geologically it's called the dockum group. And the upper part of it consists of clay and shales and that upper part doesn't make any water. The lower part, called the Santa Rosa, is basically, you know, makes a little bit of water, you know, sixty to eighty gallons a minute, but it's usually a pretty poor quality, four times worse quality than what you have in the Ogallala. Ogallala is really high quality water. And so that just represents what your aquifer looks like, black vertical lines are your wells. And you can see that they basically all penetrate the entire saturated thickness of the Ogallala, they tag into the red beds. If you know, you're a triller or a geologist like me, you wanna see where that red bed is, you can maximize your entire screen interval to maximize your water production. Uh, this is a color map that was generated by the State Engineers Office. Oh, I tried to guess fifteen years ago, I don't remember off the top of my head. It's supposed to represent saturated thickness or the left part of the aquifer, the Ogallala aquifer. So those hot colors at the upper center are very low water saturated part of the aquifer, ranging from tens, tens of feet of saturation. The outline below that is the city limits. So you can see that in the city, in the city, the saturated thickness is generally pretty small. And as you head down to the, I guess, right bottom there, there's a bigger square, that's where your southern wellfield is. And those blue colors, those cool colors on there, there's a greater saturated thickness ranges from, oh, probably a hundred and twenty feet to about two hundred feet. And so that's why you're making your most water out of that area, it's very little up in the, in the city limits. Yeah, that's pretty much it for that, so it really varies depending on where you are in the aquifer system. So one of the things we did was to estimate what the saturated thickness is going to be in 2062, which is the forty-year planning period. So on the left part of this, you'll see the N M O C, so that's the Mexico Office of the State Engineer, their saturated thickness estimates. The State Engineers Office built a groundwater flow model, which is a computer model that simulates how pumping impacts the aquifer. And so the State Engineers' estimate of saturated thickness in 2062, it's kind of right in the center column there. The first number up there is forty, fifty-one, zero, and so on. The state's model way over predicts reality. What they assume in their modeling is that everybody that has a water right or declared water right uses their entire amount every year, which is not true. I mean, you all have, this for municipal uses, or six thousand acre feet of water rights, you're using about three thousand. But this model was built in nineteen ninety-nine and it just assumes that everybody's pumping their max. And that's why their saturated thickness estimates are pretty much not valuable for what you are planning for. So what we did is we looked at the, using data from your staff and from wells monitored by the U.S. Geological Survey, we looked at what the drawdowns are in the two wellfields. So the city wellfield, the average drawdown in that, the second column from the right, was an average of about half a foot a year. And in the southern wellfield, nearly a foot a year for average water level decline. So our estimates of saturated thickness in 2062 are the far right columns. You can see we project a hundred and sixteen feet of saturated thickness, where the state engineer projects forty for that particular one, and so forth. So I think our, our estimates are much more reality based, not to say that they shouldn't be checked, this aquifer thins out and it may decrease at a faster rate or something, but hopefully our estimates will be much more accurate. That's the good news, I guess the other news is that when you look at forty-foot water level decline, so really mining the aquifer out, although it says recharging, it recharges at a rate much slower than what you can physically mine it out at. And so you will have the saturated thickness and, and the aquifer gets there, that means your wells produce less water also. There's less aquifer there to give water to your wells, so it's kind of a thing. But you saw that map that we, we saw earlier, the other place, you know, outside of town, you can see where there was darker blue areas and so forth. There is going to be more saturated thickness in other areas as time goes on too, the wells can be relocated at, but certainly at crisis points, maybe it's a trial trying to go over the years. Uh, we got a lot going on with this map. So those kind of vertical sort of blue lines are the elevation of the top of the water tube. And the upper left, you see thirty-eight, forty, and then when you get into the low right, it's thirty-six, seventy. So what's happening is water is moving from the northwest to the southeast. So it goes from recharge areas to Texas to discharge to, so, quite a bit of water you see along the state line over there. So the orange squares are areas where there's reported spills to the oil conservation division. Probably not all represented here exactly because there was over, the data we looked at, there was over three hundred and sixty spills. The good news is that most of those are cleaned up pretty fast, so pretty small spills, they might be on the order of tens of gallons or something that they can exonerate out right away, they don't impact groundwater. Uh, there are fifteen active sites that have been impacted by oil and gas activity and they're represented by the green squares and the kind of burgundy squares, they're a little hard to see, but they're scattered around. And recently groundwater correction is in four years. Anything that's off to the side of your wells, we call that off gradient, it's harder to suck that contamination into one of your wells. Anything down gradient or downstream of your wells, again, it's hard to pull that contamination back into your wells. So the good news is most of those impacted sites are either off gradient or downstream down gradient from your well. But the bad news is it does indicate that, you know, there's a large potential for groundwater contamination at some point. Hopefully that doesn't happen. So we looked at the population growth story and then projected it into the future. So the round dot there, purple one, starting on the bottom left, that's from the census data, U.S. Census data. And so, it projects out in 2020, population in 2020 was eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight according to U.S. Census. And so we did a low, median, and a high growth scenario because, you know, what's the point of pulling water in excess if you, you know, you have to have water in excess to meet the demand, right? So if you just had four thousand acre feet and projecting a high growth, you can't run out of water. So you gotta make sure that you plan on water use for the future. So these are the three scenarios we looked at for how much water you might need in 2062. So the top one is the blue, again, shows your actual water use from 2019 through 2020. Some of the data from two thousand and nineteen ninety is a little sketchy perhaps, but the recent data is much better and much more reliable. And then based on the different growth scenarios we had, point four percent, point eight percent, one point two percent. We projected demand out into the future at different water uses in terms of gallons per cap a day. So what we did for our gallons per cap, the calculations was we took all the water that the town uses divided by the number of people, except for the water that goes to the refinery, that was excluded. So all of the water use is divided by the number of people, give you the gallons per cap a day. So you can see in two thousand, you had a really high gallon per cap a day use, it was about two hundred and seventy at that point. And then by 2020, you guys have done a really great job, it came down to two hundred and nineteen. Uh, we certainly could use some input from you on this. What we projected for conservation out to 2062 is only a gallon per cap a day use, GPCB of two hundred and ten. Not very aggressive, going from two hundred and nineteen to two hundred and ten. So if you wanna have a little more aggressive schedule, we can certainly recalculate all of this based on input from all. For comparison, Los Cruces Utilities, their goal, about twenty sixty is a hundred and forty GPCB. Elmer Bortos is a hundred and sixty-five. So those are really impressive, I wouldn't say you want to go that low, but maybe it's up to a little more, but keep your thoughts, just let us know. And it totals, the, definitely at the top is your total municipal water right of six thousand and seventeen acres. This table summarizes all your, all your water rights files, so that the L dash four oh five eight through whatever, there's just a whole bunch of obviously file numbers that you have. Also described that you have a permit or a license in the usage. So the municipal use is the top part of that table, it's six thousand and seventeen acre feet, point five eight acre feet. And I'm trying to throw away on this, but what's really interesting is one of those rights, the city, this L two oh eight wells are actually in the city, they actually have a license with them, which is very unusual. The State Engineers Office doesn't give out licenses much anymore. Used to be, you sell your waters, I have a room, it's a thousand acre feet, and I've used that thousand acre feet documented that I did, that it gives you a license for it. Now that's not really the case, at least I haven't seen it in the last five years or so. Not sure why, but they don't want you to have a license anymore, they want you to have some permit forever. And then both of your irrigation rights on the bottom of the license, and the total for irrigation uses is about seven hundred and seventy-six acre feet. So you've got a lot of water rights, which is good news, which will meet your, your future demands.
And real quick, on that one, uh, on the permit, permits, is it possible to any of that at any time or that's what we're allocated for next year?
Uh, the permitted, the permitted amount would be the maximum amount that you can use, so.
But we couldn't add up on that.
You know, not unless you bought water rights and transferred them, yeah. And then that's subject to a state engineer review and public protest and all that sort of thing, but you could add to it. So given, can you go back to? So given, can you go back to, oh, right there, I'm sorry. So on the high use scenario, you're just a tick under six thousand acre feet. So in order to try and get more water rights, it'd be pretty hard to sell at this point to the State Engineers, say we need more water rights. Because that's a true maximum growth potential, you know, one point percent for forty years. So the State Engineer doesn't like you to speculate on water rights. So the beauty of the impossibility is you get the hold of the forty years in excess. If you were a farmer or rancher or something like that, they might say you're speculating and that you didn't use that water for a long enough period of time. Subject potentially for mature abandonment. But I'm doing a legal stuff, Patrick should probably do.
The biggest concern is what they're pumping across the state line. That is my concern, that maybe we might run out quicker than that, because it's all circle irrigation, not basically wetland. It used to be wetland, now it's all irrigation. So that's what worries me, that we make all the right calculations and all this stuff about water.
Yeah, hopefully you're later on recommending a water level monitoring program of pumping and non-pumping. And that's something you really need to keep an eye on in case the rates of decline start to increase. One of my theories, and I hope I'm right, is that as Texas tries up the saturated thickness over there, as the water level gets lower, they can't suck it over any faster, right? It's almost like it's only cut off well a little bit. It goes as fast as it can, but the thinner it gets, it just can't move across as well. So that's, that's what's trying to, it seems weird to think that. But yeah, I know that, I know what they used to do with one well for irrigation. They now take saturated.
They also really end up pricing their irrigation electricity. Just letting people down, everything is commercialized.
That might slow down.
So on this graph, I apologize, I can't read the majority of it. But the upper growth line, it was a projection of maximum growth for forty years. And that would be the only circumstance that we would approach to what our limits are that we have current.
Yes, and we even assumed that an extra approximately three hundred acre feet of water rights would be needed for pollution control in case one of your wells got contaminated and they have to be stopped. So we even threw in an extra three hundred acre feet for each of those scenarios. So water rights are some of the file numbers for wells that are open in the city limits and in southern wellfield. So this is just to kind of show you the breakout of that. So the one in the green there, we've got almost three thousand seven hundred acre feet of water rights. So it's just in the southern wellfield. And the blue one is the southern wellfield under file, I should say. The green one was under a particular file number of L four oh five eight. Blue ones are two different other file numbers. Because under a given file number, you have multiple wells that allow you to produce that water. And then within the city, from the L two oh eight series that we mentioned earlier, that I mentioned earlier, you have nine hundred and sixty-eight. You've got a pretty diverse portfolio of water rights for sure. So it's really helpful for the future. This was really amazing to have you and I. So when we did the Water Planet in 2014, I recall that when we did the questionnaire for public input, we got, can't remember, it was either six or eight responses. So we didn't write that in the report because it seemed kind of bad. So it was just like, here's the responses we had. At this time, people were really into it, over a hundred and thirty responses. And Jay Lee was able to get that pretty quick to us and get to our questionnaire and so forth. So it was really nice to see people were being engaged and concerned about their water supply. They want to have some input on it. So that being said, it would detail in the appendix, saying in this report, this draft report, it has a really detailed breakdown from a bunch of questions we asked. Kind of summarized the questions here. So one of the things is the majority of the people agree that water scarcity is susceptible to contamination. It should be conserved. Ninety percent agreed that recycled water should be used to irrigate parks, horse fields. And sixty-four agreed that landscaping ordinance should be adopted. And so this is where we had a bunch of questions that we lumped together to summarize for the sake of the meeting here. But the, this top one, we had a series of, I think, five questions. And so we said agree, strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, strongly disagree. So questions lumped together was water supply is scarce and susceptible to contamination. Undoing droughts negatively affect the supply. Water is being pumped for faster than it recharges, and water should be conserved to ensure supply. So you can see the blue, vast majority of respondents agreed with that. A slimmer of orange disagreed with it. And it's less than a third, maybe, neutral on that issue. And then we had a series, a bunch of series of yes, no questions. So kind of lumped together for this first one. So has your household already implemented water conserving measurements? A slight majority said yes. And it really falls in, interestingly, with the next question, which is, are you willing to consider implementing water conserving measures? You can see those two graphs are, the charts are almost the same. So I don't know what that means, but that's what it shows. So the Water Conservation Plan is an important part of this. You know, you're talking about reducing use over time. There's a lot of ways to get after reducing use. So any collection in the water system audit, valuation of rate structure can help you out. Infrastructure improvements, you know, any water that's pumped into the system, if it leaks out, that's not conserving water, right? It's water you gotta pump. This aquifer, you'll probably get it back into the aquifer, but you're paying for it and it's going out. That's kind of low-hanging fruit for a lot of communities. I don't know about yours and how your interest. Use your use. Looking at reclaimed water for the parks perhaps. I know that treating water to a point where you can put it on parks is not inexpensive, because it's got to be a Class A work, because people will come in contact with it and so forth. Emergency water restriction ordinance, I think I've heard some talk about that earlier tonight. Water restriction ordinance. But anyway, it's a great thing to have. Unfortunately, you're not in a place like, you know, Las Vegas or something like that, where their old water supply went down and had a sixty-day supply before they, I think that's a package system in there to treat it. But you can still have, you know, major water line break, a tank problem, something like that that affects people who lives adversely and really drains the tanks quickly. Those things always happen on the hottest day of the summer, as far as I'm aware. You know, maybe looking at emergency ordinance where people can't water the yards as much, or restaurants can't serve water, gotta use a paper plate, stuff like that. Anything to cut down on water use, but that's kind of a good thing to have, an easy one to get at. And then just a regular water conservation ordinance that could include things about nineteen times a day. Even, you know, there's lots of different things to consider on that as well. So again, we need your help with this portion of the plan. This has the various components of the plan and a schedule for implementation, because plan's no good if you don't implement it, right? So we have, as you can see, you're gonna do, you're gonna start working on everything next year. I know that's not true. So any kind of priority you would like to give us for what you want to look at here? We can put it in here. So when you start your water conservation audits and how often you're going to review it. Emergency water ordinance, evaluation of reclaimed water. You guys probably have an on-call engineer or something that can start looking at that. And then also utility, water utility master plan. Infrastructure improvements, water level monitoring program. A lot of communities don't have ways to measure water levels in their wells. And so what we recommend is that, whenever you have a pump for maintenance or you have a well issue or something, when your pump goes back in, you rub a inch and quarter PVC pipe alongside of it, strap it on there, and, you know, stove it out at the top, and then you've got a way to measure your non-pumping water level, which they call static, and your pumping water level. If you have that information, you know how quickly your, you know, your static tells you how quickly your aquifer's going down. The pump, if you have a pumping rate and a pumping water level, that tells you, it can tell you if you've got a problem with your pump, it can tell you if you've got a problem with your well. So it's nice data to have, to have trouble shooting what's going on. Especially if you've got a well that makes a lot of sand, and you have some of those. Those beat up your pumps faster. So seeing how that pumping rate changes, the water level changes, you can say, ah, we're ready to have a fire or something. So meter installation, put your place broken meters and then install meters at all your parks currently. I believe parks are currently unmetered. So that'd be great, so you can really figure out where all your water's going, how to manage it. Evaluation of water rate structure. One of the problems with water rates, I know everybody hates to have their water rate increased. It's that as you conserve more water, then you've got less money coming into the system, but you still have basically the same expenses. You still have staff, still got wells running, you still have utilities, everything else going on. You've got to make sure that conservation, I think it happened in the aquifer, maybe some other places, conservation was so successful, then all of a sudden they have a shortage for their utility department. So that needs to be looked at too. Updating the forty-year plan every ten years or so, whatever you think you best have in view coming on that you need to look at, planning for businesses coming into town, things like that that are going to use water. The wire transfer water rates, like I said earlier, that's something we have to put in every plan, but you're sitting really good in terms of your water rights portfolio right now. Aquifer storage and recovery is a really good one to try to keep the aquifer full in the future. I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second here. Here it is. So aquifer storage and recovery is where you take water off it. People would take their treated waste water, for instance, and then get it back into the ground. So you should do it, it's got to be water standard by the time you do this. And you can pump it down, you have really good wells, you can pump it down in existing well. You can make dedicated wells for it, and then keep your aquifer full. If you can pull, then you can pull it back out. Another way you can do it is you can put in basically ponds. El Paso water does this, and they can put in, when they have surface filters. They can put in like ten thousand acre feet a year in the aquifer. They have a similar aquifer that you have here, part of the town. They just excavated below the Caliche, and they put the water right in there, go straight in. You have so many water rights, the State Engineers' Office makes it so difficult to get a permit from them for aquifer storage and recovery. I think an issue would be to need a permit from them. Permit when you do aquifer storage and recovery allows you to keep your water rights associated with that. You have so many water rights that, in my opinion, that's not a big issue for you. Wet water is going to be the long-term issue. So if you do aquifer storage and recovery in an area where you control all the wells around there, you control the water right out of the ground, you don't really need a permit from the State Engineer. Unless you just say, I've got this paper right in my hand for it. You can always get it later. The process with the State Engineers is very cumbersome. It's a number of monitoring wells, updating a local, making a local groundwater flow model, demonstration pilot project, you know, lots of water levels, lots of water quality sampling, and then demonstrating that you're actually controlling that water. It's a, it's a very cumbersome and expensive process to do that. You put in three monitored wells, holding groundwater flow model, you could be in it a couple hundred thousand. Where if you do it in settling ponds, like I described, or another thing El Paso and other places do is they have like these quality life trails. They can look like rivers, and they'll pipe in their water to different places, have a little waterfall, and it just soaks into the ground there to walk past or fight or something. Then you just need a permit from the environmental department. You need a permit from them if you put it straight in the ground too. But you cut out that big long piece and twins of piece with the State Engineers' Office. But it just depends how you're gonna do it, where you're gonna do it. What do you think about having paper water rights for just the wet water? So next one. The one that we're always kind of required to talk about is desalination of brackish water. I think you're a long ways out in that. The only brackish water you really have is the base of the red beds, which is the Santa Rosa stand, so well yields are well. As far as since your toll is all solid in your water here, as let's just say, it probably averages around five hundred milligrams per liter. The toll is all solid, so the Santa Rosa aquifer probably going to be closer to two thousand milligrams per liter. So then you have to treat that. Wells will make a lot of water, they're deep, they're expensive, because they're going to be artesian, so cost is higher than those. And then once you get that salt out of the water, you gotta put it somewhere, right? So it's a real mess that I wouldn't think you need to look at for quite a long period of time, but we talk about it. And the other one that gives people the Yuck factor, again, now on your horizon is direct portable wells, where you treat your wastewater, drinking water standard, and you put it right in the drinking water system. They used to say toilet to tap, but nobody likes that. There's a lot of other goodies in here, I was just hitting the highlights tonight. But I covered everything, and that's your questions you might have.
Lots of questions, just don't even know where to start, so commissioners.
Stop the geologist.
No, would you go back over the one, I don't remember which one it was. But it's one where you're taking water, when you're running it down some trail. Describe that one again, that was interesting to me, because we have, for most of our lot of stuff, we had a water feature at Chaparral Park that hasn't worked in, well, since we've been here. And so I was just interested if that was something that was comparable or whatever there. So if you could run through that one for me, please.
Yeah, so this one, it's just. The water feature just becomes part of the aquifer storage. So essentially you build an area with a little walking trail or whatever. You have to make sure you excavated below the Caliche. Probably need to do a study for infiltration rates and that sort of thing. Anyway, so you make a little kind of like waterfall. So a bike comes out, water goes down, and it looks kind of cool. The trail goes by, so people can have a bench to sit there. And you can do that in a number of spots, so it becomes a nice little quality life for people to go walk around or ride their bicycle or something like that. So you make it like a little river feature almost. So water will go away, and then it'll just sink in. El Paso water, so we can do that, we've helped them with a couple of designs for that. And I think City Albuquerque's getting ready to look at it, because they want to get more water in the ground, but they don't want to just do a pit and pour it in there. They want people to have a place to go and do something nice.
So what about your evaporation rates? How does that, was that?
Yeah, it's not too bad really, because infiltration rates should be really high. So the evaporation would be pretty limited by that.
I was curious if that had a factor on it or not, since we live in the desert.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the surface area of it and guess on. But I'm sure your evaporation rates are probably seven, eight feet a year over here. Although the standing water, right?
So where is our water going now? When we get our range, we have the grates on our road, the sides of the road, water's going down in there. Where's it going, where's it going to?
It stays in the pond, and it does some of it, does absorb into the aquifer, but you have a lot of evaporation rate in those reservoirs, because they're not below the Caliche.
Where are the ponds that they go to?
Okay, so the one, the new one they're doing is the huge pond north of Chaparral. The other drainage ditch is just that. It is a ditch that goes out and keeps going southeastward down until it just runs into so many holes in the ground. It dissipates.
Then you actually have the ones that dump, the one that dumps into the, on the backside of the button warehouse.
That's the one for, but his pond is not charged by the road. His pond is there all the time. The drainage ditch runs to the stop at his pond.
So then be ones to see it, get it down below the So having that runoff, you know, we get, we hit three inches at once.
Yeah.
So.
So the, the only caution I, you can do it, it'd be pretty easy to take a lot of that water and get it into the ground. You can, you can take, you know, like, oh, we just call it rattle rigs, but anyway, put it in the conductor casing, service casing for oil and gas piles, drill a diggle hole, fill up gravel, along the caliche and the water will seep through there, you can do it at different places. The caution is that it's runoff water, so the runoff water's gonna have a bunch of oils and fuels and stuff like that, so I think if that was something you were gonna contemplate, probably wanna do some water quality sampling first before you get too carried away with that.
I know that, you know, earth is a filter. You know, filter some of that out, but when you said you'd get wild, you'd get whatever that you really don't wanna put your on.
Yeah, and that kind of, that kind of system that we get, that we're talking about would require a permit from the environment department and might be a hard set.
Well, the thing is, the thing is with our trial ones, that you were asking about, will that basically be the same that we're getting runoff that says oil and there's a
No, that was treated, treated for the wastewater treatment.
Okay. So like from the treatment plan, you pump it over to the sprinkler system and then the access, we run back over to the the waterfall, runs over the waterfall and then it stages along the, the pretend river there, there were spots where it would drop down into the, the ground.
But it was treated water.
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't make that clear, sorry.
We still use treated water, do you see?
I don't know why we don't, because that other, that other water went back, because I remember drinking it, it's always got this craving.
You scoop it, it's like, oh, my hair fall out.
I was going out there drinking it, to like, take time after he's a doggy's drinking, that water doesn't.
Yeah, we used to, it's the pipe had old, so they found a
Are you just keeping the park green after things, you're mint, a lot of vitamins in mint, look like he's interested.
Okay, well, can you explain, what are our next steps, what's your recommendation?
Uh, my recommendations for the next step, at least for helping out, would be the schedule of when you wanna implement things. What kind of goal do you want for your gallon per cap in the future? In terms of moving forward the next steps, I think the conservation plan is really something you all need to work at. And then, you know, infrastructure, where do you know you have the operators, obviously, you know where the worst leaks are, they're out there fixing them all the time, I'm sure. Where can you focus on reducing the leaks in your system so you can be more efficient? And then, you know, we've got infrastructure improvement, how are your wells doing and things like that. But I think I would do things first and then focus on the wells. Get those going.
Dr. Martinez, would it be possible to maybe put together a meeting? It, it's so difficult with the, trying to get commissioners together and all that, but I think if we could implement David and Justin and some of the water department and different things, then put together a priority list that we can then furnish to and work on that.
I think that's a good idea. Mayor, I apologize, I know I'm supposed to address you first before answering the question, so I, I apologize.
I'm not a protocol guy, don't worry about it.
We're fly by the serum pants.
Yeah. Most of the time. I'd like to thank you so much for your presentation. First of all, it's, it's nice because now we have the answers, no, we're not running out of water right now. Uh, we are losing, you know, we, we all have been told we've lost nine key over the past four years or whatever it is, but to hear that we're not really in that situation at this point and that we're not rapidly approaching that situation, so I, it's comforting for all of us.
Thank you all, Mayor, Councilor, everybody, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good.
Well, you're good. Yes, there are a few, well, there's two interns on the senior advisory board are up, and you need, you need Harris is going to resign from his position on the board. So next meeting, we just need a vote on who you guys would like to appoint, three. And those are all the people who I've reached out to so far, anybody else in contact that's before January?
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't, all right. Bring this action item, for a motion on our first, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance five ninety-four, ordinance granting modification of franchise number three twelve, Lee Penny Electric Cooperative Corporation, its successor, and assigns to operate and maintain electric system in the city, setting forth conditions accompanying the grant, why did I pick this one? The franchise providing the city regulations of electric system and prescribing penalties for the violations of its provisions. Okay, motion in a second, please, or probably the last one to
They're not, come done.
Discussion. Many Mr. Mayor members of the commission, I didn't meet with Ash, and we'll field it, we'll let you go, move forward.
Any questions, discussion from the commission, not, I'm sorry, I was wrong, sorry, Shannon, roll call, please.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Trivia.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance, I didn't read this much in high school. Order number five ninety-five hundred to the city of Loving, for a resident project. Participation agreement providing funding from lead funds to the Loving County Economic Development Department for thirty thousand dollars for traffic impact. Out. U.S. Highway eighty-two. Okay, I have a motion in a second on this.
I can just say it was presented at the last, or the last
I think so, we had a discussion and
And it has been advertised as required and this is it.
All right, any questions, discussion? Shannon, roll call, please.
Commissioner White, yes. Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Trivia.
Yes.
Mr. Dany.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one three four.
No.
Oh, I marked up the name.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm too far away.
Again, I'd like to start. Like the big motion, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one three four, approval, I, hurry, for deployment with in the Wooker. Is there anyone else that's, okay.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I mean, none, Shannon, roll call, please.
Mr. Gandy.
Yeah.
Mr. Trivia.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, now. One thirty-seven, other side. No, one thirty-five is gone, one thirty-six is gone.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for grant, no, excuse me, Mike, for resolution twenty twenty-two dash one thirty-seven, seven approval of it for definite quality for employment.
We have a motion in a second. Shannon, do you have any discussion on this?
Not really, with ACC compliance, they're just, they had it before and they're just, they're the only bidder in about the same amount that we think before. That is, non-DOP is sixty dollars and DOP is eighty-five dollars for
Any discussion? Not, roll call, hold it.
Mr. Trivia.
Yes.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. White. Mr. White.
Yes.
Motion, thank you.
Big motion, thank you. I'll be answering any questions.
Commissioners, any items you want to ask? Oh, yes, Mr. Bo.
How do you copy repairs for this? There's two in the same fourteen thirty-one, twenty-eight, that's vendor number one zero two zero five. Just wondering if that's, you did the same order count one or was it broke up or was it the other?
Is that the one we wanted to comment?
It's on the first page, fourth one down.
Yes, water finance.
We have two companies that are Rico, we have two Ricos here and there's a Rico at the police department, so those are our training schedule. Yeah, and so it's not that we pay them twice, it's that it was two different accounts that came out for that fourteen, so it was split. Or it's split between water and then pipe. And then it, and it was actually like a three thousand dollar invoice for this, yes.
One amount that was split in half.
Yes, one, one was split in half between those two boats.
Vendor one zero eight two four, just like cattle library, twenty thousand dollars.
That's for Ellen C, she, she pays on it, I think it's like sixty thousand and she pays like in three increments and twenty thousand.
And it's four.
I don't know, I'd have to look at her stuff, but get back to you. Whoever uses
In, 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 in the heart, when does it, it's like working on top of each other. So it's sixty thousand a year?
I'm sure that's correct. I'll be double checking.
Okay. And I'm just, I haven't seen that in a while, so I'm asking.
She does it every
Vendor one four six five two, I think, I, I technologies for the wastewater SCADA system. Is that a payment, five thousand dollars, is that a partial payment? Or we add as far as that SCADA, what's going on?
That should be a partial payment with SCADA. You do have a contractor looking at wastewater in our water system.
Right.
So that should be a partial, the total amount is about thirty-two thousand.
So is that for equipment or is that for just coming in and looking over the system?
That would be both.
Updated what they could and they're tweaking where they can just to keep this running good right now. And then when they get the new meters, anybody can start my station.
Vendor one one nine three two, water drink loan, three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
It's the loan that we pass, we pay every
Who's that, who's that to, who's that? It's a loan that, who's, and we pay in, that in Mexico, I suppose. It's the same thing. Now, all these subscriptions, fiber technology, three four thousand.
Those are yearly, it's for all of our software, it's a yearly thing, they would pay once a year.
And how, how are, how do our pieces come out? Of our, does it come out of our budgets? That's how we pay this?
Right.
Right.
Yes.
See, we almost said ten thousand dollars a pieces. Up there, I understand, we get stuff with it. Just wanna make sure that we're getting the whole thing that we need and
Most of the time, in our, just like when we have that already scheduled in our budgets for like training, because it's hard to take a PO and buy food at each restaurant with a PO. So that's why most of the time that's already in our budget, so we're going to spend that money.
And I just wanna see that, I know January, we're gonna be going over the budget. So I wanna see where we're at, the charge departments with their budgets and written budgets.
Any other questions, discussion? Shannon, I'm sorry. We have a motion in a second on this item, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Trivia. Mr. White, yes. Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes. Okay, now the floor opens for a motion to move into closed session. This will be the finality of the public meetings this evening. We are, I wanna say again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, thank you for your attendance this year. Thank you for your concern for our community. I know we could, his thing. I read all that other word. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, section ten dash fifteen dash one in MSA, nineteen seventy-eight subsection H dash two regarding limited personal mental matters, EMS personnel, city clerk, HR director, and city man. There we have motion. Close session, Shannon, we have one missing, but I'll just go back.
She had food for this food, yeah?
Yes.
Mr. White, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Trivia.
Yes. Yes.
I'm gonna go guess, I'm gonna invite pretty careful, I'm urging you.